Ready?
One second.
Good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, January tenth at nine AM. We'll start our work session. We have anybody from the public that would like to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks for getting the the change of governance back on the agenda. I think that's good to not let that drop. I also was curious if the county has any plans for any public interaction with regards to all of the work that's going to be done on one twenty-six in Bryanville and then from think about the Palview post office all the way to revenue and maybe communicating with people. They, you know, find alternative routes for networks going on or at least let them know what's going on because they think that's going to be a pretty big impact all the way around.
So you're talking about the ODOT room?
I know ODOT, that's their responsibility, but I just figured it's it's our community. So if the county kind of reaches out, maybe the city just adds up because no one really paying attention.
ODOT, really, that's under their jurisdiction and they should really be doing that and having meetings, but.
Yeah, if they're not.
I'm not saying we're not.
But that usually is there. Usually on a state highway like that, it's the state who takes over.
I'm happy to reach out to them though and make sure that they are doing that job of of reaching out to people.
Yeah, I just think both in town and out there, it's going to impact the canyon people. We get them from abandoned rentals.
Yeah, maybe I think related to that is, you know, the county's engaged parametrics to, you know, do a transportation system plan update that will be a component of that update in terms of, you know, updating the traffic counts and so forth in there to hopefully accelerate the construction or scheduling the construction for that particular project. Those meetings should be seeing public announcements coming out in the next week or two related to the scheduling of the first open houses. Looks like we are planning one in Palbutte and one up at in Juniper Canyon. And there'll be similar meetings, similar content and so forth with one add-on out at Juniper Canyon, which is to speak specifically of road needs in that particular area that go beyond the existing transportation system. So we look, you know, look for information on that.
We'll up with Kathy Eby at the Public Community Center, so. All right. Andy is advanced, ready?
Yeah, I'm not seeing Vance. Jump on, there he is. Okay, perfect. Just a brief introduction on Vance. Vance Jacobson, you know, has been retained by the county to perform a compensation schedule update for the nonrepresented employees in that work. He is looking out beyond the the nonrepresented to look at some positions out in road and out in the sheriff's office as well, just benchmarking. You know, seeing how that relates back to the information for the nonrepresented. Vance, you know, with my firm back in two thousand seventeen eighteen did the initial study and he's going through that process to update that work and he's got about a fifteen minute presentation, five slides to go through with you this morning. And she mentioned Vance has been fighting a coffin. Bear with him a little bit.
I think I'm, I think I'm good to go.
Perfect.
Good. If if I can take this opportunity, yeah, thanks for inviting me to this meeting. And this should should not, yeah, take very long at all to give you a high level overview of of where we've come, where we're at and where we're headed. Anyway, all along the, this is, this would be the second page of the slide presentation. All along are, we've, we've held to a a very succinct grouping of objectives. Since you already have a an established salary grid and you and you have as background, you have a job measurement system for assuring proper internal alignment of jobs, a new job or a changed job. This, this project is really to you know, fundamentally to modernize the alignment of of all the positions to reaffirm and acknowledge change and make sure we've got new positions in the right place. And the the second objective is is basically is to update and and construct a master salary schedule. This is a single comprehensive schedule that would fuel and feed all different employee groups, nonrepresented sheriff roads, everything. And and this way, by having that as background, the county has some assurance that there's a consistent competitive philosophy throughout the organization, regardless of organizational affiliation. Then lastly, it's just that along with other things that are happening at at the county, such as paid time off, other kinds of interventions that contribute to quality of work life. Whatever we're doing, we need to make sure that it blends with all other forms of cash and noncash equivalent compensation into a into a an attractive pattern or a package for existing and and new employees. This is, this is really important because it it sends a, it sends a message back towards you know, the full work life that people have in the organization. I I think so many organizations, that's that's all they think about is the dollar sign and versus other other pieces of compensation that makes makes life easy on everybody. The next page. Now, the the this is a a really succinct step by step on how we're designing a responsive salary plan. The first thing that we do, and and this is important for a couple of reasons, is we we use a job measurement system to create a top to bottom hierarchy of positions. This job measurement system is proven in virtually every industry. And it's also a a a baseline, what we call a primary standard for not only getting the proper alignment, but also starting to analyze equal pay and 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 comparable worth. I think all of you know about the Oregon House Bill two thousand five. You know, that asks the organization throughout the state to to be compliant with that law regarding equal pay. It also is set up so that it provides proper spacing among skill levels. And so if we're building a career path for like junior, intermediate, senior, we have, we have a measurement tool that actually gets us the right spacing to acknowledge you know, the differences in skills. Once we've done that piece, we we go and and do a a look at the competitive market. Now, in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, we did a pretty extensive look. This is a little bit more cursory than than in those years since our fundamental focus right now is is on the on the internal alignment of the jobs. That that I always come back to that being our primary standard for determining pay. But at the very least, we've, you know, we've acquired salary range information from from about eight or nine counties that are that are in a what we would call a reasonable market, a reasonable reasonable region. And 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 they include those that are noticeably smaller, but they are growing rapidly. And also those that are that are bigger because one of the fun first rules of labor market is is that anybody within a forty-five minute drive is is a competitor. And so that's that's where we get people from, who we lose people to, and we get an overall snapshot of that market. And the then, once we've done the step two, we go through a mathematical process to design, to to redesign the the master salary structure. The the master salary structure is driven off the middle of the salary range. It's a thirteen step system and step seven is our competitive target. And we we recalculate that and then re effectively rebuild the structure so that that it's responsive even twenty twenty-four and moving forward. Lastly, now we now we assign people to employees to salary grade and step. And this this really is a process. We've, we've created a mathematical link between the the job measurement scores and the and the competitive dollars to build an overall pay policy. What we don't do is we don't move jobs around just because of vagaries and just because of unique circumstances in the market. We develop a unilateral structure that averages out our our competitive posture. We get the positions into the ranges and now we can look at what it takes to round people to the closest step where from where they're currently being paid. Also, it it helps us apply, if we have a minimum guarantee like a COLA, it helps us apply that. And lastly, it also helps us identify potential pay inequities. This, I'll, I'll explain that in a few minutes, but that that's a very important piece to get it so that that we have the, you know, we have the look and feel of doing our best faith, good faith effort at at having proper internal alignment of salaries within the jobs. I'll go to the next slide and that is just an illustration. This is a, this is a a visual illustration of the of the market. The, and if you're looking at the same colors that we are, that we are here, the math, the mathematical line, that is, that represents the median and or middle of the of the labor market. And the the two, the two brown lines on the on the bottom and on the top, that also gives you a frame that shows the where the twenty-fifth percentile in the market is. At that level, three quarters of the market is paying higher. And then it shows the seventy-fifth summarily, and that means that salaries that are up at that level are paid higher than three quarters of the market. The the red line is is where the existing step seven is at Creek County. And as you can see, it's just a little bit below that median line. And if you go to the bottom of the page, it says, you know, the competitiveness of the ranges at that target is forty-third percentile. And and that's, that's been statistically derived, meaning that doesn't necessarily mean that you're seven percent below the market. It just means that fifty-seven percent of the of the market is paying higher for the same jobs. When we wreck, when we design the range, you'll notice the blue, the blue line. That roughly represents, that's the second to highest line there. And that roughly represents the about the fifty-fifth percentile, which more appropriately more appropriately illustrates the weighted average in in the market. That that it's, it's, that's in Oregon, that's actually slightly above medium. And and so we use that line. That line is a simple, it's a pretty straightforward mathematical equation. And that mathematical equation gets applied consistently to determine all of the, all of the salary ranges on the master salary schedule. And then, and then once we the shaded, the shaded gray or line that goes vertically, the rectangular box, that's an illustration of how we design, how we design the steps. So that at the bottom of that box being step one, where somebody would start who who just meets minimum qualifications for the job, there would be a series of steps that would get them to step seven, and that usually occurs in, you know, in five to six years. And and that's, that's the learning curve of getting, getting to be paid at the competitive target, which coincidentally reflects average people in the market that that have anywhere between five and seven years in their, in their particular jobs. And then that rectangle moves up and it's a series of steps that goes to the top. The closer to the top, the right, the steps get smaller in percentage. And 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 so somebody that has been in that particular position, in theory, for twelve years should be closely approaching the the maximum or the three-quarter part in in the marketplace. And if you look at individuals in the marketplace that are paid at that level, they're gonna, they usually will have ten plus years worth of time in their job. The I'll go to the next, I'll go to the next slide and on, this is the last page. Then, once we've, once, once we've kind of got through that illustration and gone to the point of converting to the new ranges and getting getting everybody on and getting everybody moving toward the competitive target, which incidentally usually takes a couple of years to do. It just, it's for most organizations, you're not set up financially to do it all at once. And so we, what we do is we give a roadmap to get everybody moving, moving forward at that level. And so everybody gets into the into the range. And as the first example would illustrate, you've got two people that are making thirty-two, thirty an hour. And and if you look above, you can see step five is thirty-two and step six is thirty-three dollars an hour. Implementation would would move, would round that employee A to the thirty-three dollars an hour. And employee B is getting paid the same amount, but they've been in that same exact position for nine years. Our decision support model would identify that as a potential inequity. And 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 if that holds, it would recommend an additional step moving forward to create some separation between those two positions. And that's something that could happen for two years or 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 one year could could take care of it. The and so that is the implementation process and then the cost. We don't have that exact number now. It's going to take us a few weeks to to get to that level. But the the implementation cost then becomes a factor of of a couple of things. One is any COLA guarantee that is made that nobody gets less than X amount. And then the other is the cost of rounding to steps and then the additional cost of of granting internal equity, good faith adjustments. And that's what is so critical for complying with that Oregon Equal Pay Act, House Bill two thousand five. The 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 beauty of having the beauty of having a a salary structure that has a thirteen or a twelve-year lifecycle essentially is the fact that these ranges are are of sufficient width that they start to make the county or 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 many school districts and municipal governments, they make they make their pay practices much more relevant and across industry environment. Private industry has wider ranges for jobs. Certainly. And and this way you can look at, you can look at range architecture that's very similar across virtually any any industry. And the and and there's a massive trend in in the public sector to go to Y. This has been going on for about ten, about twelve to fifteen years for wider ranges. And and then the other, the last item that what it does do is it gives us a way to be flexible on hiring people that have to come from afar or they exceed the qualifications in the job. And that that flexibility in an organization like yours is really needed. We also are preparing or have prepared a tool to to guide the higher end process to make sure that it does everything it can do not to have new people coming in over the top of existing people. And and that's where we're at right now. We're looking at best and final on February fourteenth. And 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 discussions before that.
Great, very comprehensive. Thank you, Vance.
My pleasure.
You know, if there's any questions for him, you know, certainly can do that now. Also, we had set up meetings for you to, you know, today, we're going to push those out to next week. Vance is going to be onsite next week as opposed to this week. Okay. And and as Vance mentioned, you will be planning for this item on the fourteenth. I think a work session there to give you final update. And then the twenty-first would be the be where you could be acting on. Hey, thank you, Vance.
Thank you for inviting me.
Any work session format discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, check in and and talk a little bit about this, you know, back in April of twenty-three. Prior to that, you know, the court was meeting and every week with a work session and then the two regular meetings, first and third Wednesdays. We went ahead and changed that in April. We've been doing a work session, moved it from a Tuesday to a Wednesday and doing it every other week. Week before regular court meeting, and a big part of that is to go through agenda items that are on the the court agenda for the following week. And then we also allocate time like today with Vance's presentation to, you know, deal with some bigger issues such as that and, you know, things that take, you know, several steps and so forth to get through the process. There are a number of goals in the adopted budget that we need to be able to spend time on with the three of you. And the current schedule and the current framework for how we are conducting these meetings, I don't think sufficient to be able to do that. You know, we we need more of that time, more times for the sheriff to come in and give reports about what's going on so that all three of you are hearing it. I'm hearing it. We're all hearing it at the same time and you know, kind of help us work together better as a team as opposed to where he's hearing it at different times, different ways and so forth. Whether it's John, whether it's Casey, whether it's, you know, anybody within the organization is that more of a a framework for that consistent you know, communication here departmental and within. And I'm thinking along the quarterly basis, you know, to use the quarterly reports here this last time when the questions came in, organized format to the public, I think that works well. Good information, but there isn't the time to have follow-up in that framework, a follow-up conversation to engage them in terms of what, you know, happened during the quarter. You know, any challenges you faced, how did you deal with those, you know, that type of thing. So I throw this out, you know, to say, I think the organizations made quite a bit of progress on a lot of these agenda items that we bring into this framework here that frankly, we could put them onto the regular agenda, have them as a discussion item. They're in your packet in advance. You get to see them. They're typically following quarterly discussions or other communications. So these aren't items that are surprise to you. And then they can just go to the agenda being dealt with one, one time as opposed to preparing for this meeting, then we, you know, bring it up again in the consent agenda. And people are showing up to both those meetings. As you can see, you had twenty-plus people here this morning or on the on the video conference, and that has a cost to it versus those twenty showing up at the regular meeting, dealing with that in in a smaller group. Those that are directly impacted with the department, you know, being in more of these quarterly type, you know, meetings and bigger issue type things that involve. You know, the TSP is an example. And we're going to go through a lot of work with the public. We haven't had really any dialogue with you guys on what's all involved with that. I mean, it's been a very high level. Here's the scope of work, but in terms of, you know, really how that's going to work, diving into it, addressing your questions, any concerns you have about it, we haven't really been able to do that. And you know, throw it out there. Is that something that you're interested in seeing more of? We can.
Yeah, I think the more information, the better.
And work to change that. If it's something that you'd rather keep it the way it is now, or do we need more meetings? You know, I'm just looking for some feedback and the way to get that really is from you, you three in a public dialogue.
Well, sure, you got it, Nate. I I think we do need more meetings and more getting together. I'm just working with the ethics of, you know, how we have to do it. And so I agree.
Yeah, I'm aware. I I agree also. I I do want to keep in mind all the flexibility to bring things to that agenda. Like we still have the business that has to act upon things in a fashion or a reasonable timeframe and the sheriff comes in with a problem and needs something done, we can do it. And I just use the sheriff because he's sitting two people down for me.
No reason such a troublemaker. Well, thank you for the flexibility because I've got a couple of items here later in the.
I agree with Brian telling us, very good call.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't just work on a schedule here. I mean, things come up and we can do our best to work.
Right, yeah. And we want to maintain that flexibility. Trying to get a little bit more proactive in terms of looking at issues, getting them in front of you earlier, deeper conversations, so we're not ahead of you versus or being reactive, right? I think we've been doing, I think that's continue to get better and we just incrementally keep pushing that to do that. Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and I'll draft something up and we'll start have some conversation with department heads tomorrow and start moving incrementally into that. Send some communications out to you as we go ahead and implement, okay?
Okay. Andy, IGA for operations at the airport?
Yeah, John, I saw and, you know, Kelly Koffel are here also to address any questions you may have on this. It's been like ten plus years ago that the county and the city, you know, entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the maintenance and operation of the airport. And a big chunk of this really went to the city. They had the capacity to handle that. Kelly's been involved, I think, most of that period of time and doing full service FBO, airport planning, all of that. And the county was involved, as I understand it, really from an oversight standpoint and, you know, kind of an owner's rep in you know, encouraging us, you know, certain direction to develop the airport and so forth. And over the last few years, the the counties become more engaged with those conversations and where the airport is ultimately going, what they're, you know, doing. The accounting standards here a couple of years ago. and where the airport is ultimately going, what they're, you know, doing. Uh, the accounting standards uh, here a couple of years ago also changed to where that necessitated, required the county to book all of the lease information, all of the airport, you know, operations, everything and anything to do at the airport really had to be accounted for in the county's financials rather than somewhat just an asset in all the operating stuff happening over at the, the city. So by necessity through the, the regulations, the county's been taking on more and more. Uh, here recently, you call you uh, accepted Kelly put together an R F P for uh, F B O services. That uh, was competitive process in the county entered into an agreement with the firm to provide F B O services which reduced significantly the work that Kelly was doing as related to field services and so forth at the airport. He's still involved with all the leases and the tenants and, you know, working with the F B O and so forth to, you know, run that operation. But the I G A itself does not reflect that change. And so we've been working uh, with the city. Go ahead and update that I G A to where it is really a simple agreement to where we, the county, agree to pay a fixed mutually agreeable amount on an annual basis, paying it quarterly back to the city for Kelly's services. And Kelly effectively continues in that airport manager role. And more so than not, will be reporting to the county board and itself in terms of, you know, anything that's gonna happen out of the airport. That's how the agreement draft is right now. And, you know, we have yet to arrive at the amount. The county and the city have been sharing the cost or loss, profit loss, it all been basically uh, underwritten by both parties here for the last however many years. That number continues to decline. Um, they split it fifty fifty and the objective that we had when we adopted the budget for fiscal twenty three, twenty four was that within five years, it would be a cash flow neutral. So it wouldn't cost either party. And we're going through the review right now to see exactly where things are now that the F B O is on board. We have some new leases that Kelly's brought to us. We're also implementing airport policy change related to the rent rates that are being paid by existing tenants and providing a, a ramp for them to get onto the new leases and pay out and cost them a little bit more to, to do that, but they, you know, are able to extend their leases and get new lease terms. Uh, but we'll have that here in the next couple of weeks, review that with the city. Uh, and see if we can come to, you know, an amount that, you know, I'm targeting a fifty percent contribution by the city and consistent with where we are today with an annual review of that with the city. Kind of the thinking I'm having right now, I'm wanting to get feedback from you. And if you have any questions for John or Kelly as well.
I'm, I'm familiar. I'm good. Going forward, Kelly, do you have any? Um, no, I I've seen the, the I G A, my understanding that it's still under some maintenance, some more color, but.
Yeah, yeah, we're, Steve and I are still talking about it uh. As well as Jim Gady, before bringing it to these guys with a, you know, a firm amount and all that, was wanting to make sure that we had a chance to talk about it. Steve had a chance to talk with his city council, make sure that we're not getting too far ahead of you guys.
Yeah, so I, I'm good. I just, there's a lot of, first of my mind, I mean, it goes into a lot of details uh, beyond that, but uh, but the, what I've seen of the agreement, I can. It's good.
Good.
Um, the other thing I wanna mention is the uh, old I G A expired at the end of the year. And so currently uh, we should do something. When we report on this, we should report faster. We should put a, kind of a placeholder um, extension in place to begin to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that reminder. So on the next, your court meeting, go ahead and have an I G A extension to the thirty first of March. That exists to all be, yeah. Anything else on that?
That's it. Thank you.
Sarah or no, sorry, Casey. Um, so what you have in front of you is uh, the transfer ownership, the tractor that was acquired, you know, Pacific four grant is coming to an end. Uh, we've completed the grant. Um, the tractors relatively new, rebranding news. I think some of them, you've seen it, we've seen it in the shop over there. Um, it's an electric tractor and they valued it at seventy pounds. So out of the grant, just to, to clear that, um, we've acquired two charlie solutions in this electric tractor. It was a technology brand that was originally slated to show the technology of electric tractors and as they progressed in their advanced state, it, it hasn't always worked out that way. Um, this is our second iteration, excuse me, this is our third iteration of electric tractor and uh, we continue to use it. It'll pull arrow, it'll do some basic things that are harmful or doesn't have that link to do it. So we have it, we, we display it at fair, we display that some of the bull rides were appropriate. And so it is going to go from Ford Mobility Fund as far as ownership, and that's what this document is.
Yeah, sounds good, man.
Yeah, I, I, I think technology's got uh improved before there's gonna be real asset in the agricultural business.
Yeah, sure.
Totally agree.
So Casey, remind me, is this on the agenda for uh, next week for approval?
Yes. If you'd like to come up, put hands on it, try it.
You might be able to pull away and eat with it.
Sarah?
There would be the Creek County Library. We would like to ask the court's permission to close the library on October fourteenth, twenty twenty four for staff training day. It's also Columbus Day. So there's a lot of other things closed that day as well. Uh, it's a good opportunity for us uh, to plan our programs, learn about our workflow system, Sierra. And uh, it's just a good day to get together and regroup and recharge.
Yeah, sounds good. I know that you guys do this every year and it's a really good asset to your department and so.
Thank you.
Nick?
Nick Lilly, uh, safety committee chair. Uh, so what you have in front of you is uh, it's been prepared by our merger response team in collaboration with the safety committee. Uh, it's a policy adoption for suspicious packages uh, found on county property and employee protocol for how to handle those packages if and when they are encountered. Uh, so recently, uh, there's been some reports of occurrences from other municipalities where uh, packages have arrived um, suspicious. Um, whether it's uh, fentanyl or anthrax or, or some kind of uh, attempted election interference. So we just wanted to provide our employees with a protocol. Um, so if and when this occurs here at Creek County, that they're properly prepared. Um, so uh, Amber Blanchard and uh, Andy Pearson uh, collaborated, we prepared this document. Um, and then legal reviewed it and prepared the uh, formal adoption documentation. Uh, and we've actually had one incident over at the library some weeks ago where this actually occurred. So it was a good drill for us. And uh, just looking to make sure that we're prepared for this in the future. Um, one critical aspect of this is there's the, the closest hazmat team is in the valley. So puts us in quite a situation if we have a real, a, a real uh, deal here and potentially have one of our facilities shut down for days. So.
Better to get ahead of it than. Yeah. You have any input, Sheriff?
Uh, no, Andy's been working with him, I understand on this. Um, the only other thing I have to say is there's already, and it doesn't really apply to the with the suspicious packages, it does apply to bond threats in the court system. There's already a uh, program in place through the court system under the courthouse security pro- protocols on what happens with that. Um, so I don't know if you've seen that with uh, the courts or not, but.
Thank you. Good, good. Yeah, thank you for putting that together.
You guys keep, I'm gonna.
So we can move it forward. It's caught on the justice center. So in the courthouse, all the mail is taken to one of the justice center. There's gonna be mailboxes that are gonna be out of, they go on First Street. They go on First Street. There'll, there'll be one for each, each suite. That's how the post office figures it. Um, and then there will be a large one. Uh, that will be for packages. Um, I'm just drawing that out as far as if there's any input on that. Um.
Well, there's my courthouse uh, project manager up behind you there.
So we wanted to go with a bigger box. So you just didn't get a tag in your box telling that you had a package and that you had to go to the post office to get it. To save that extra.
Yeah, no, I think I'm good. I think uh, you know, if every uh, division, right, I guess, but or, or uh, you know, cause if you have different from us or whatever, if we had, like, what you're explaining, it sounds good to me. It's sort of a, it's off the doing. Um, I would say for our office, I know we get a lot of FedEx and U P S deliveries. Um, I'm not sure what that's gonna look like down there. Um, but I would assume that they would just kind of figure out where, what division they need to go to and deliver that to them. Um, but as far as U S Postal Service, um, I think as it stands now, we have an employee that uh, twice a day goes on rounds, is what they call it. And uh, it includes going to the post office and then um, you know, going to the court and going to do now, going to all, all the department trading um, that we do business with and, and to transfer stuff. And uh, the, the, us and the district attorney's office has uh, slowly moved into an electronic format. So we're not actually hand delivering things as often. Um, and that's good. Uh, there are some, some entities that uh, still require us to do rounds and, and do that. So um, some of them, you know, uh, have to be hand delivered, set as according to. But uh, I think uh, so I guess at first in place, we'll have our own mailbox and all the divisions will have their own mailbox. And there'd be one big boxes that, yes, through postal service, but not through FedEx and U P S.
Yes. And I, you know, and then they're giving up the point about U P S or FedEx and probably you come up with how we folks want to. I've seen that happen. That was, that could probably just come in a firm. Um, but otherwise they will have to have access to, to come in the back.
Yeah, well, uh, well, as security uh, major on that is, if the front door for man, then I would say that uh, the, the guys that are there can call respective division and they can come down and get it. I mean, I think it'd make it easier on them. They might be a pain in the neck for whoever's there, because if they can't drop what they're doing or whatever and go pick it up. I, I'm not sure what that looks like. I, I think we'll just see. I think if the courthouse is dropping it in the courthouse, they'll say, and then I don't know.
Our FedEx comes up, our U P S comes up to our office. Um, if Circuit Court happens to be closed during lunch hour or whatever, sometimes they'll drop it with that. Who wants to go through them? So, and then sometimes depending on the driver, they'll leave it at community development and then they'll let us know that we've got one in. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I have one question. Your outgoing mail, how is, do you have, is there a postage machine postal room? Are they still gonna come to the courthouse and access their, you know, the postage on their mail that goes out? I mean, that's incoming. You guys are talking about, what about outgoing? Is there a, are they still gonna use access to courthouse? I have to do a security plan for the state with elections. I'm working on it now. And I just need to know who has access to that room.
I think that's probably more extension. So.
Okay.
I'm just worried about to get there.
Figure enough of them to get it out.
I think, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I know the county offices, I believe, all use our postage machine. I don't know. Sheriff's Office may have their own, you know, finance does, but um, you know, I don't know how many people actually access that room and leave their mail there. So.
That's okay.
I think it's important, and like you were talking about, each, each one has their own separate mailbox down there. Cause that way you would have a, a more of a containment. If you did have a problem with a certain piece of mail, you'd be more contained and you would have had in a community mailbox. And that way you don't have to shut down everything. You shut down that one section. Uh, like Nick said, we don't have a hazmat team here local. So it takes a while to get that taken care of. Well, Andy Pearson, we do have a little bit of expertise from bomb and suspicious package type stuff. It means um, got previous uh, bomb tech information and, and training. So we do have that available. But he has responded to courthouse and has been. And I think he went to the library once also. Um, but so we have that available. I mean, it's not his job, it's not in his job description, but he's willing to help out with it. But if it's something major, we're gonna have to call the hazmat team.
And the new justice center, you know, is equipped with the x-ray machine at the entry and reviewing the O J D security documents for the state marshal. Sounds like all their mail goes through the x-ray machine for court security. So that might be something we can implement as well.
Somebody has to be there offering.
Yeah, that'll be the other problem with that.
Well, you need to in this process have a unique address for each different mailbox. So suite one hundred, suite two hundred, that type of thing.
Yes.
Yeah. So that'll impact station area and all those things.
Yep. And then we have that.
Yeah, those addresses have been issued.
Okay.
Suites one hundred to the sheriff, one fifty for juvenile, uh, two hundred for the district attorney, actually, for, so long as the digital.
All right, you're in that.
No, no, good, a good discussion. Thank you.
Um, all right, budget calendar discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, uh. This particular calendar is very similar to uh, previous uh, calendars. Jamie uh, Burgers here as well. She's in the back. She uh, helped put this all together and a couple of things I wanted to, you've run by you and, you know, get your, your feedback. Last year, you know, we did a fairly significant goal setting session. Um, you know, several days broke out uh, community justice. Uh, the elected officials group, the internal services group and uh, the public facing services like Road, Fairground Library, et cetera, all into, you know, separate groups and and went through that and then convened everybody at the beginning and then at the end, ultimately ending up with uh, the eight goals that you selected or uh, voted to move forward with. This year, we're wondering if uh, we wanna continue to do that. Wouldn't hurt to keep doing that. Uh, but to expand kind of this uh, quarter one reporting that, you know, we talked about earlier to have that brought in where we're doing the quarter two report in these groups that I just mentioned. And then from that, that feeds into the goal setting conversations with those respective groups. And then bring it all to a close. And that may take two weeks of time versus just, you know, we did this in a compressed, I think on late fourth of time though, the last year. I think this may take a little bit more time and wanna get, you know, your feedback if there's any, you know, and Jimmy uh, jumped in if I missed anything here. You know, one of the things we, you know, did, Jimmy, you know, did after the um, last year's budget process, she did an internal survey in terms of, oh, it's working well, well, yeah. Didn't go so well. I think in, in most areas, we were, I think, what's four in the fours. Uh, about, there was a few areas that were three, a couple of comments in the twos. But uh, generally speaking, I think, you know, pretty well received on, you know, from the, their apartments. So we're trying to leverage, you know, going off of that and trying to make incremental enhancements as opposed to you know, reworking anything. There wasn't anything that, you know, came back that, you know, we really re, needed to rethink anything. Um, is there anything else that you wanted to bring up, Jamie?
Um, I mean, not necessarily. I don't know how it's up. You've all looked at the schedule, but as Andy said, you know.
You've all looked at the schedule, but as Andy said, you know, kind of trying to combine those presentations. Um, with goal setting. Right now, we've kind of slated out about mid-February twenty eighth. Uh, with an idea that, you know, it would be morning sessions only, wouldn't take full days of your days, but, you know. An hour or two of reports and an hour or two of goal setting around those apartments. Um, kind of Monday through Thursday or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, something like that. So that was kind of how it's slated. If you have any very detailed questions, I can go very detailed or we can speed it very high level, but.
Yeah. Brian? Susan?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. That, I, you know, I, I think it's. Good thing. Was well received at Departmented meetings. And we.
We haven't talked about this. We'll talk about this tomorrow. Uh, I want to get your, your feedback. We got the general feedback from them, you know, to this survey, you know, last year and. Um, in just, you know, tweaking this and seeing where you guys are with it.
Sure, I think it's good educational.
All right. So we'll, we'll talk about this tomorrow. We'll have it on your agenda for next week, you know, in terms of adopting this as the official calendar that will, will go on, okay?
None good. Uh, discussion about governance change?
Yeah, well, no, my contract expires December thirty one, twenty four. And, you know, in talking with each of you and particularly with, uh, Commissioner Ermerak. What's the plan? You know, if we're not addressing this issue, my contract can expire. I'm not sure where that leads to, and it could be. You know, best if we dealt with this earlier than later. The, you know, a couple of things, principles, you know, guiding, going back to when this all started. You know, with, uh, the work you had, you know, looking at, uh, this potential change back in August of twenty two. You know, my hiring, uh, October of twenty two. Uh, you know, February, I believe it was of twenty three, you know, communicated a memo to you. Uh, outlining, you know, a process, you know, to work through to get to a decision. Executed a contract after goal setting, uh, in April to go ahead and, you know, put me in place as a consultant. Uh, implementing the administrative role with a job, uh, description that. Uh, solicited input from all three of the electeds back to, and, and we're all, where there was alignment by all three, that went forward. There's a few items out there that are continuing to be pending that need further dialogue and review and agreement on. Uh, we haven't talked about the roles, responsibilities of. The court members in terms of, you know, what they would do, not do, and how they're engaged with this. It's going to have been. You know, as we went through this process, you know, we got high centered in September where, you know, we went through the public meeting process. We solicited public feedback. In that process, you all three elected. You know, by agreement, weren't speaking what, you know, their thoughts were. You were seeking public input, uh, received that public input. And, uh, then Commissioner Brummer, you know, went ahead, uh, you know, he chose to resign. Uh, there's a difference of thought, I think, by the, you know, by, uh, Commissioner Barney and Judge Crawford. And here we sit with a new commissioner and, you know, what do we want to do with this? And, you know, one way or another, you know, I think, you know, it should be decided, a principle, guiding principle that you had. As a group before was that the decision be made? So that whoever was running for the judge position and commissioner position in the May primary. Would know what it is they were getting into, whether it was going to be a county court or whether it was going to be a board of commissioners. And. That, you know, as you see in the memo that I, you know, cover memo on this that I, uh, gave you is. And Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, uh, March twelfth is the filing deadline for the candidates. And March eighteenth, or is it the twenty first that is the deadline for the, for any measure, should somebody want to take something to?
Yeah, it's within a few days. I don't know exactly.
Yeah, and I think that it's in the memo and, and, uh. So that would translate to May sixth is your last regular scheduled meeting. To make a decision if you wanted to put something to the ballot in May or whether you wanted to make an administrative decision. Uh, on, on the matter, uh, the. You know, recall that the legal advice is you can do administrative decision. Uh, on this matter, there was some comment in the public meeting that no county has ever done that in the state of Oregon. That's. Uh, incorrect, uh, public testimony. There's actually that. There, we could find a vote that occurred to change it from a judge to, to a. Board of Commissioners. Those were all, everything we found was administrative decision. So it's. Really, I think. Up to you, you know, to, you make this call, where you want to go, how you want to handle it. If you want to move forward, um, you know, with this. You can talk about how we might do that. Now you have, what, three? Three meetings, four meetings, regular meetings, and, you know, total one, one more in January. Uh, two in February, and then the May, March sixth meeting, and you have a. About three scheduled work sessions, one in, one before each of the next three meetings following, you know, next week. So a total of seven meetings where you have the ability for the public to come in, weigh in, you know, to this. Uh, if we want to get educational materials out, you know, talking with Sarah a little bit yesterday on that. You know, she has an email distribution list, which is the ability to do op, you know, you know, op ed, uh, pieces by each of you. Uh, on the matter, if you wanted to go that route, or if you wanted to have a joint, you know, statement. Uh, I believe there's differences of opinion, you know, in talking with each of you, so, you know. You know, op ed by each of you individually, you know, can certainly be done, and my recollection. Um, you know, Commissioner Brummer, I think, had drafted an op ed and he never. Posted, uh, that was, I believe that was a seven hundred and fifty word was the maximum amount that, uh, you know, could be done. Uh, by the Central Oregonian, uh, we could. You know, also put together materials that can be on the webpage, can be emailed out to, you know, Sarah's got an email distribution list. Uh, we could put together a piece that would go to all. Registered voters in the county, if you want to, something like a budget in brief, we can just explain this and. You know, put it out with, you know, each of your op eds in it, together with, you know, just information that, uh, you know, pertaining to this. You know, it's really what you want to, you know, do and, you know, we're glad to. You know, to go ahead and move wherever you ultimately decide.
You two are lucky. I brought this up because I feel that, so. I brought this up because I feel we need to, and I feel that there's been a big loss in the public. And, and I don't know. Where you two went through this. I sat in the audience. And I don't feel those meetings educated the people, and I feel it stirred up a lot of. Uh, just, just controversy, and so I'm not sure where we go, but I know we need to address it. One of the things that Andy brought up, and I never even considered, was March is the last time you can file. So this is something we have to move forward because he is right. A person that wants to file needs to know. What are they getting into? So we need to do this quicker, actually even quicker than I probably did it. So what are your two feelings? That's, I mean, you know that I'm pushing this, so what do you guys think?
So I, I feel like we've kind of. Changed things quite a bit, and we're looking at what that looks like, and what I've seen is that, uh, I still see the value in having a county court. Um, I see. From what I hear in the community is they don't want to see a full-time administrator. They want to see a chief of staff, kind of a. I don't know, an air traffic controller, making sure that there's information available. Uh, you know, so there would be administrative help, but I, I hear from. Virtually everybody I talk to, um, that there still is value in having. Elected officials being involved, and I think we've seen that in. Activities we've seen in the county recently in, in, in the past. That we need people that are. Part of our community, working towards managing the community. I, I don't think we need to be the only. The only aspect of that. I think we need administrative help to make sure that that goes forward. But, um, I, I'm beating me against adding a full-time administrator. I think we tried it, um. I think there's been some positive things from it, and I think. Again, that shows me that we do need administrative help, but I don't think we need to give. You know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think we need to make sure that we're still responsive to the community and. I think we still have devoted to do that. With. Some level of administrative help.
I wholeheartedly believe that would be full-time administration. I think this county has known. Way above the base or. Of the current system that we have, with horses and buddies. You know, every department's in the courthouse, and I, you know, I think that. That's well documented with all the other neighboring and, and. Counties in the state, um, have come to that realization. I think the administrator portion of what we have been doing has been working. I believe I see that in the straw poll that the department heads put out. I think they want that administrator, they want. Um, to have that knowledge, um, you know, that's needed to help them manage their departments. I think that they also want participation from the county commissioners. I think they want the ability to be able to communicate with the county commissioners and, um, to have them part of. Of these, uh, county, how it functions, and I think that's been very well been done. Um, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent for moving forward with a full-time administrator. I think that it's in the best interest to the county. It's a huge business and it needs to be managed by some. Uh, people that, that are having the expertise and the knowledge to move forward and to run a business. And I don't believe that it's actually going to be necessary to have full-time people. I think that it can be done on a basis of part-time people, um, that. Can work. I know that since we've had administrators, you know, my, my time has gone down immensely. And, uh. So that's kind of where I am. I'm still for it, but it's, it's a one and a one, and so it's going to take, uh. You know, a, a different perspective of how they visualize the county being, um. And to move forward, and I, I'm not trying to put that pressure on you, but it's just obvious.
I don't think in an elected official, you can give county administration, because you'd have to put in that they need a degree in econ and they needed accounting and all of that. That isn't, that isn't possible, an elected official, and I agree wholeheartedly with you on that part. And where the county administrator comes in, whether it's full-time, whatever. You can't expect elected officials. I look at us as kind of the. And I said this to the department heads, you guys are the glue. You're the ones moving everything forward. We're a little bit of the fluff. That you, you come to and we, we hear the public's needs and wants and we respond to accordingly as we can. As we all know, the last two weeks, I've become Crete County's complaint department. I've heard a lot of complaints, and that's okay. Because I'm the new blood and they need to be ready, and I agree with that. So I do think. I don't know whether, I, and I'm looking at the public right now. I don't know whether it would be good for us to have a meeting where we project our budget. And we talk about the major, I'm not talking about the, Sarah bought Scotch tape or something. I'm talking about the major things. And we, as the three commissioners, sit there and let the people talk to us. I'm not sure that that isn't a mechanism to ease some of this unrest that's going on and all this little. Just, I, I don't know that that might not be something that we need to think about, you know?
I, I don't want another account of what happened last time. I don't.
I agree with.
I, I know, I don't want it to turn political to where it breaks to where Judge Crawford has to go out and. You know, get a hold of a bunch of people and tell them, you get a hold of all your friends and show up at the meeting, and then. Then Dave busts in here and he wants to hang us all from the Justice Center. Um, because people need to have information, they need the positive and the negative of it. They, they don't need to be prompted to be vicious and argumentative and threatening. Um, to, you know, to back up what he feels needs to happen. So I. You're interrupting me. I don't interrupt you. He came right here. It's on the record.
I'm happy.
You can listen to the whole message again. So I, I don't want it to get to that point because that's not constructive. That doesn't help anyone. Here or the citizens, the department heads, it's, it's not good.
And, and I'm not talking about political. That's beyond, I'm talking about just a factual thing. And then we stand up and again, like, I, I don't believe an elected official can become an administrator. I don't feel that should be part of their skill set. So therefore that would be part of my. Thing, but again, I'm not addressing the political. I'm addressing the factual, and I know that you have a, a lot of people out there that are very upset with the way things are going and, and they feel. And I don't feel those three meetings addressed any education. I feel that they ended up being a complaint session. And not a constructive thing. I don't know how you stop the political. I'm not, I, I, I don't know that part, right? But I just know that you try to do good faith. And you keep it at that, and I'm not sure how you attain that. I just know that people are lacking information. There's a lot of, uh. Stuff going on and. I'm not sure. I, I just know we need to come up with an answer and agree. And as far as part-time versus full-time, I haven't been in the job long enough to make that. I guess, what do I want to say, a quality decision or an informed decision on that. I'm just talking that Andy's quitting. December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And we need to figure out what we're going to do because we need someone, if we're doing this county administrator. We need them to be there with you for four months or longer. To get this to be serious, and how do we get to that place? And that's what I'm pushing for.
Yeah, and I, I just like to go back to Brian's comments, that. All I did was share with people that there was a change in government coming and that they needed to come and be part of the conversation and. If, if the people of Crete County don't agree with you or us, then we're probably headed down the wrong direction. And, and I can't force people to believe in a certain way. I can share with them. That things are coming and that they need to be aware. And come and have a conversation, but. You know. Clearly, there, there was a huge amount of people that did not want. You. To make a decision, or you and Jerry to make a decision at a meeting. Without going to a vote or, or doing those things, so. I, I don't see that as, I know that it's uncomfortable when people disagree with you. But that's not, um. That's, that's not our job to just be right all the time. We need to listen to people and, and engage with what they believe.
And I did listen to people. I heard a lot of people that came forward and said they would like to have an administrator. And that they also thought that it was administrative job to do that. Administrative change. So I heard it from both sides. But I did hear the ones that were threatened and then the ones that were allowed, um, versus, versus like they come in or. Quiet member have a dialogue. So. How, how we move forward, I think it needs to be done, um. And it doesn't have to be figured out whether it's full-time or part-time at this point, but I can agree with, uh, Susan that. Andy's time is up, and I think the sooner that we could get someone on as an administrator to work with Andy. The easier the transition that will be for all the department heads in the county. And I, I don't believe in a chief of staff because a chief of staff is working for an individual. And I think that puts all the power into one person, and this is a power situation. This is an equal be between the commissioners.
Yeah, again, I, I, I think we've gone back and forth on this for years now, but. It's not a chief of staff for a single person. It would be a chief of staff for the county court. As a whole. And would be openly accessible for all of those people equally as well, and, uh. I just think that it's a, a better. Government sense because you still have a lot more interaction with the departments and the. County court. Versus an administrator that's the only person who gets to make decisions. And I think that that's where we've run into quite a few issues we've already seen. In the short period of time, and we need to make sure that we don't continue on that path. And put the county in jeopardy. Here we are.
So on that basis, I think, Andy, you've done a very good job of organizing us, and I've said this to you, the board base, based on that, you know, this isn't a person like that. You've done a very good, I think you came in and we needed organization and we needed. You know, this isn't a personal attack, you've done a very good, I think you came in and we needed organization and we needed structure and you've done that. Maybe on some of the things where you went off a little bit, maybe that was a little bit too much. But I, I do think that basis there is, is, is good, it's structured, it's a hundred and forty four million dollar business. That's what we've got to keep considering, politics aside, this is a business and it needs to be run like a business and you've structured us. I do believe that we should start alternating at department head meetings, I think that there should be. One of us at department head meetings, it can't be all three of us, it can't be two of us, but we should stay. Now we should be listening to our departments, I feel commissioners should be there, I feel commissioners should be here in the office and if you want to walk in and talk to me. You should be able to talk to me and, and all of that, so. I don't know, I know that if it goes on a ballot for an administrator, you have to live with the decision that you got. I don't know if, I, I again, I, I'm not in the politic part of it, I'm looking at this straight as a business thing. I don't know whether we educate the people and then put it on the ballot and leave it to the people or we make this decision, I'm not sure. I just know we need to move forward and we need to come to a consensus agreement and do this. I got both of you agreeing on one thing, now we're going to move on now, okay. You got, I'm getting there, so anyway, so I'm not sure where we go from here, I'm not sure whether we want to do that. And you're saying you have a mailer, maybe we mail out an informational letter? That's just totally business facts, this is our budget, this is what we have. Maybe we just do that, that takes the politics out of it, I'm not sure, I just know the people want education. And they're sitting there, you know, there was one gentleman who supported me, which we all know, I won't name it. And he's doing figures as this having his public meeting, you know, but. The figures aren't accurate because he doesn't really know where to plug in the figures, I'm not sure how we do it. I just know it needs to be done and it should have been done before, but we need to work on this. And I, I do think you need to consider, Seth, that elected officials should not have. Andy's job, I think we need to have a different aspect in that job. And I think we're very important that way and obviously you guys know because every day I come back as the complaint center. And I have things that will bring me up and that's great. But I think the administrator is our, like I said, he needs an econ major, he needs an accounting major, he needs, that needs to be his. Person and I see us more as a people person that people can come to and we can make. A hard fact easy for them because we educate ourselves and we can make it simple for them, that's, that's what I think my role is.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're all, I think at least we're in agreement on that, but I think that it's just the, how extensive that role is. Is it so, is that that person that's the final say in everything with the county?
No, I, no, I think we're a team and I think the county administrator works, we're still the boss, in my opinion. We're going to be the boss and whatever, county administrator is basically our accountant is what I, and that's kind of a. Really basic way of saying it, but he's our accountant, he's the one making the figures and whatever. It's just like Andy brought up today, do we need more work sessions, yeah, I think we do, we have a lot of issues and legally we can't. Get together or whatever, so I agree with that, those are good thoughts and good things brought forward. And again, I think Andy has done, and I wasn't for you, I want you, I should, should maybe make this out right here, I wasn't for a county administrator. But as I've seen what you've done and I've looked at the budget and I've looked at things, the need is there. But I want the people to be comfortable about that need and I don't want the people to think we just run roughshod over them. And I feel those three public meetings just didn't accomplish anything, so how do we go from here and help our constituents? And I don't care if I get elected again or not, I mean, I'm not political at all in this thing, I just want the best for the people. So how do we get them the information and how do we proceed from here? That's the part we all need to figure out and roll over and think about and whether it's a mailing, it's a meeting, it's whatever. As long as they don't start throwing things, we have Bill, he can have a shield. But yeah, I mean, I, I don't know where we go, but I just, I do think we need a county administrator. I, I do think we need to move forward with this and I think we need to make the citizens of Creek County comfortable with the decision.
Well, I, I guess I'm back to one, two, one of three because I, I don't, I don't agree that we need a, I, I think we need administrative help. And I think we need somebody in that position to take care of key departments. But I think there's, there's nothing wrong with us working with different departments and, and being engaged with them. And that's where I think.
So how do you divide that the county adminis, I, I, I don't know how you divide that. So the county, let's just, let's just branch off, so I take a break because I've had extensive. So I take growth, how do I divide that off with Andy, you know what I'm saying, there's a certain, I just don't see how that. Works and then you also take the risk of an elected official maybe getting a little bit of too big of a head and. Going to Rebecca and saying Rebecca, I'm going to get you guys all purple vests and, and that's not. That's, that's not, so I'm not sure how you can have a part time administrator. And, and again, you're dealing with elected officials, which you don't know who the next guy is going to have your job. And you don't know whether he's going to be big headed, arrogant, humble or what he's going to be. So you're kind of trying to figure that out. And that elected official can be a wild card, so now I can be very efficient maybe being a liaison to roads. But the next person can't, so I'm not sure that we don't need that continuity of that administrator.
But I think you can run into the same issue with the administrator, you can get.
But we're still, we're still his boss, yeah, and I told Andy in some situations, he's not a people person. I told him to his face and that's okay because that's the way, yeah, that's what I'm supposed to be, basically, you know.
But that's where I'm saying that you need to have a melding of the two. And I think that you need to make sure that the, the county court is still involved in hiring department heads and.
Oh, I, I totally agree, I totally agree and I've totally been a little bit upset about the way there was a hiring issue here recently. And I discussed that and yes, I totally agree, yes, we need to be. And we need to be at department head meetings and we need to more involve ourselves, that's, that's, that's part of my thing.
So now you're starting to talk more about a chief of staff than.
I don't care what the title is, I don't really give a damn, you can claim yourself whatever, it's just, I'm looking at the job description.
And what I'm saying is, I want the county court to have a more, I mean, if, if we were to move forward with what Brian wants. We would no longer have the ability to hire and fire department heads.
Why, why do you think we can't do, where is that written down?
I mean, we're not involved, I mean, that was the conversations.
But we need to be.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, let me clarify because there's been a few things that are not at all consistent with the reality. Reality is final decisions are made by you guys, that hasn't changed, you guys are still in charge, you guys set the policies, set the budget. I implement, administrator implements, anything that I've implemented has been stuff that you guys have already said you wanted to do. Where there's pushback, what typically happens is you have elected body that backs up the administrator that's implementing the policy. Not criticize the manager for implementing the policy, so that's one thing that needs to be, you know, dealt with. And whoever's in this seat is going to run into this situation with whoever in your charge. We've talked about the chief of staff, I've, you know, and this, I'm putting my consultant hat on, not the administrator hat, consultant hat is chief of staff for three people. Not going to work, never has, never will. You'll be right back to where you were before, which is three different people going three different directions with twenty different department heads. And you got twenty different directions, we have a bunch of silos and we're not working together. That's proven, that's where you've been, no matter how you brought this about, it hasn't worked. And that's been over a long period of time, I mean, this isn't new stuff for this body dealing with, this has been dealt with for a number of years. And I think what you see in the results of the straw poll, you know, very much, you, you just don't see. You know, eighty eight percent approval to go to a board of commissioners. You don't see eighty plus percent saying county administrator, you don't see those types of percentages to do anything. And you've got that despite, you know, some of the, the hiccups and some of the issues that we've, you know, done in terms of rolling this all out. You still have that level of support to move this forward. So, you know, that, again, you know, administratish, administration, what we do is help bring these issues forward. Where we see policy, you're bringing issues to me as the eyes and ears of the community. You know, Suzie and you'll have some of this stuff in executive session later, you know, that she brought to me here the other day, you know, reaching out, talking with Will. You know, that's like, yeah, this is something we need to have all three of you be aware of and. Administratively, you know, we, we've set up a agenda that includes. An opportunity for the three of you to speak and talk about what you've done in the last week, two weeks, whatever it may be. And that's an opportunity to bring items forward that all can hear and can get decisions. You know, there, at least some guidance on, okay, this is something we need to go work on or add to the work plan, et cetera. But administrative person that's implementing policy is far different than a chief of staff that's just doing whatever you guys want to do. And whether it's the right thing to do, whether it's the wrong thing to do. That's an organization that's, you know, destined to, to, you know, not make the progress that you have made in the last year or so. Um, you know, you've, you know, big picture, you know, you know, what we've talked about is you have. The data centers, you know, situation that's going to be coming online, you know, revenue wise, beginning in fiscal twenty eight. And we have set a, of, a, a plan in place that gets us to when that money starts to come in. And, you know, as we start to fine tune that plan, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, being able to recruit, you know, good people into the finance office. Which we have the strongest finance team I think the county's probably ever had. Um, you know, since I've been working with the county, you know, dating back to, you know, two thousand sixteen and without that strong team. It's going to be chaos and, and you can't find good people, I don't believe. When you've got a chaotic situation from a leadership standpoint in terms of, you know, possibly changing three people and, you know. Secretary or Chief of Staff, whatever you want to call it.
Well, I think it's a lot more than a secretary.
Well, again, that's my experience with it, that's my experience, again, I'm the consultant here and I'm giving you, whether you want to hear it or not, I've given you my advice. That position would be completely ineffective within this structure. Any strong person, personality will ride over that person and do whatever they want him done. So you do need somebody that's going to be, you know, sticking, sticking with the agenda, working with folks, working through issues. You've got a number of other folks here too that are elected, you know, the sheriff and the clerk and the assessor, you know, um. And the DA are four that are involved on a day to day basis, full time and, you know. You know, coordinating with those folks and their responsibilities and so forth and you've got two others that are not engaged full time with us. Have their treasurer position that, um, you know, is really a check on what's going on with the finance operations and so forth. And then the county overall and then the surveyor that is, you know, on contract to do survey type work, but a statutory required. Type of elected official for counties. So I think the, you know, the key is making a decision here in a timely fashion so that the organization itself can transition smoothly. To wherever you want it ultimately to go and if you choose to, you know, put it to a vote. Again, you know, that, the May's, March sixth date is an important date, if you want to do it administratively. So that the people that are running some of the positions are aware of what this is going to be, you know, that again, you know, by March sixth. The idea of doing public meetings and educating folks. The risk of it is what we saw from, from Dave when he came in. Do we have that type of, you know, the, the last meeting, you know, to be, I sat and took it. But I'm not going to take that again from this community, I'll tell you that, just not going to, you know, put up with that, you know, I'm here because I was asked to be here. I didn't come into town, say I'm in charge, you know, I was asked to be in and, and work with the group to put together a job description. And then implement that job description, you know, and consistent feedback and some of it's been good, some of it's not been so good. Yeah, and what do we do when it's not so good, we try to make it better, what do we do when it's good? We try to redo more of that and it's incremental improvement in this organization, we continue to see incremental, you know, progress made. Um, glad to see I didn't have to call the road department to know what they were doing this morning, I just went to the club and. Driving the county roads, I saw the county roads were taking care of the city roads weren't and talked to people at the club and. They're saying, you know, from different parts of the county, yep, the road crews are out taking care of things, it's like perfect, don't need to even check in with them. Sent Rebecca a note this morning saying good job to the road department, now city road department hasn't been out. You know, at least we're not this morning, we're out probably now when it's daylight and a little easier. Maybe from a working hour perspective, but it's not what was going on, you know, early this morning when it's most effective. But, you know, the administrator role, if that's where you want to go, I think. That's a, it's a key thing, but it's not, it's just part of it, you can hire an administrator in the form of government and jab now. It's just, it's a little awkward, you know, you've got an elected official judge that has these. Administrative responsibilities, these, that's, you know, what the perception is at the public level. And so that can lead to, you know, you know, little, you know, conflict, you know, here between, you know, Seth and I and worked through that and we've been able to work through. Through those things, I think pretty effectively, uh, but on an ongoing basis, is that. Going to be the most successful organization structure for you and particularly when you're trying to recruit somebody? I mean, if you had recruited into what I'm doing today, tried to recruit that. I don't know that you would have had the success that you've had in the recruiting. So, you know, I mean, I knew what I was getting into, um, if I had not known what I was getting into, I probably would have been gone within two to three weeks. Um, you know, it, it would have just been, I don't need this in my life. Um, but I knew what I was getting into and, you know, I talked with each, you know, one of the elected when I came here. Uh, talked with a few of the folks that, you know, at the department head level, what I was getting into and. You know, it, it is what it is, but, you know, I think the organization as a whole is in a much stronger place today than it has been in a long time. Uh, certainly from a fiscal standpoint and a planning standpoint of where we're going, what, you know, what the issues are and how we're going to address them. That's, that would not have happened without an administrative, you know, position. In place with the background and understanding of the issues and how to work through with the departments to get those things. And elected officials to get those things done, um, so.
And I have to commend Andy on the fact that I came back with something that disturbed me. And we are going to do it in an executive session so that we can talk about it, so. I commend that role that he's doing and he's getting us to be able to get together legally and ethically and work on things. And, and quite frankly, he didn't, when I went in and talked about it, he, he responded and that is very important. It's just like you going out and seeing something or you said and he's our. I don't know what my term would be, our dealer that's shuffling the cards around so that we can deal with it in a legal. So I, I commend you, I, and I double commend you for today, but yes, I mean, so like I said, we just need to figure out. Where we're going and get in agreeance and do this, are we going to do a public thing, are we going to do a flyer? Are we just going to vote on this amongst ourselves? What are we going to do, we've got a quick quibbling and I do see a lot of what he's done has. Su- super, uh, strengthened our position, I guess, I don't know if that's exactly the right word I want, but.
Yeah, no, again, I, again, I think there's a lot of really good things Andy's have done, Andy has done. But I think that that same person that can do the shuffling can have less of a role and. And when, when, when I was bringing up the, the other aspects of, we aren't actually hiring the people, Andy's doing all the labor.
Which would need to get involved.
But, but what I'm saying is, as soon as you take that away, Andy says, well, I'm not going to be a chief of staff. That I need to be an administrator, I need to be in total control of this process and then I need to share with you the top person. And then you can decide if that's the right person or not. And what I'm saying is, that's too much, in my opinion, I think we need to pull that back to the elected officials. And we need to be reviewing department heads and we need to be much more engaged. And, and I can tell you that as I've brought those things up throughout this process, I've heard Andy say to me, well, you're looking for a chief of staff, not an administrator. And that's what I think the people want and I think we can find a way to have a little bit of both worlds and not have. A completely part time county government and still have administrator help, but not have to have it be. This person that's just the, the pinnacle of everything. There's still a lot of value that all three of us bring to, I mean. Does that mean that you're just going to give reports about the justice center from here on out? And that you're not going to be in those meetings and and do those things? I mean, th- there's all these things that we're very good at. And if we have somebody that's an administrator, you start losing that value. And one of the most important things is understanding the community and understanding those community needs and what they want. And being able to see the people that are coming into the organization and making sure that those people match the goals and the beliefs of our community. And again, I think Andy is a very unique person, especially when it comes to this position. I don't think you're going to find somebody that has role values and rule understanding. I'm not saying Andy has a great grasp on that, but I think he at least leans towards that and is open to those things. And I think we could very easily turn and just end up with somebody that does not have those values. And we end up, I mean, if you look at Bend, Jefferson County, I guess Jefferson County has, but a lot of these counties and cities around here. They can't find anybody even close to the caliber of somebody that would do what we're what we're wanting to do. And so if we go down that path and just throw it all away and then we go, oh shit, there's not even anybody available to do this. I mean, it's, it it just, we're we're putting our community in our in our government. I mean, I think we're. Right now, fighting for the heart and soul of our government. And if we just decide, we're just going to give up as elected officials and we don't want to be engaged and we just want to be part time commissioners. And we'll just kind of follow along with what the county administrator says, because that's not how it works right away. But as you move through time, you're going to have to see that administrator become more and more powerful. And those part time commissioners just start to rubber stamp things and not pay attention and not put the time in. I see, I see it all over the state.
But isn't that on the basis of the elected official you have? Like I say, I mean, you know, did you, so basically, why can't one of us go to department head meetings? Why can't we be read the applications for department heads? Is there any legal ethical thing that I don't know? That determines that we keep what Seth is saying, I understand what he's saying and I understand we don't want to lose that ability. And I certainly would ask for those things, but I'm the dumb one that doesn't know all the po- political part of it. So they're educated.
Sure, yeah, as far as department head meetings, you made the request and, you know, you're showing up at the meetings and you want to rotate those.
I really think we need, yeah.
There's some downside to that, you know, downside might be less participation by department heads. In terms of you being candid and, you know, conversant, you know, conversing. But, you know, certainly bringing you and and any of the others and rotating however you guys want to do that, you know, I've said, you know, we can do that. As far as the hiring, you know, thing is gone, directors, what we agreed to, you know, going into this was the. I would check with, uh, before we go out and recruit, have the conversations with them and having the conversations, you know, for next job here. Uh, with you, with others, putting together, you know, what we are ultimately recruiting for. And certainly you can re- review any of those applications. We've talked about what role do you want to play? Do you want to be sitting in on interview panels? Want to be sitting in on the process to select applicants? And what I've learned is, for the most part, unless it is something that there's a passion for that particular position, one way or the other. Been very little interest. At the end of the day, I can't hire. Administrator, the way it's set up today cannot hire a director without it being ratified by.
Come see, come see county court, which again, I think comes down to who you elect. If they have a passion for that. And they're willing to put in the time for that, I think you get that stuff. I I mean, and and if that elected official is not, is collecting a paycheck and not doing that. Then the voters should not be voting for them. That's and that's kind of my opinion. That's why I need. Leave campground cleaner than I found it. It's certainly not because of any other political motivation or whatever. So I I feel that comes. And, you know, like I say, I've been to two department head meetings, you've indicated you're going tomorrow, which is great. Hopefully, Brian, you want to, I mean, I just think we participate and no, if you're hiring somebody to jan- do janitorial. In the sheriff department, no, maybe I don't need to care about that. But if you're hiring John here, yes, I do need to care about that. And I think that comes from us individually. And I think I communicated that with Andy. I think he knows. I I just kind of think that comes from within us and who you choose and who the people choose. But this also is, we're getting away from my biggest thing is what do we do about the people of Cook County right now? Who have a lot of questions and things like that. And where do we go from there? I mean, I I do we put it that do we want a county administrator? I'm not sure, but I know we have to go somewhere and we have to go rapidly. And I understand your, I understand both of your points, but you, which makes it really hard because I have value in both of them.
So and it's kind of a one off. You just mentioned sheriff.
Just an example of how we, and again, I'm not going to say Cheryl's elected too, but I'm just saying. Finance, let's just go to finance. Do we need the gal that records invoices? Maybe not, but do I want to know about Christina? Yes, I do. You know, I mean, there's a certain, there's a certain seriousness here and I might maybe not using the right example.
And I want to kind of expand on John. So John, he's, you know, head law enforcement. He knows who he wants to hire. You know, and he vets them very well, vets them through many, you know.
Oh, right.
And it's, it's his office. It's totally up to him, we are. Doesn't have anything to do with us. And so.
Would you not like to at least know who he's thinking? I mean, I have faith in John. If he came to me and he said he's hiring Sarah over Andy because Sarah can whatever. Then I would probably agree with that. Or you're afraid that your personality is not paying into that too much?
No, I just consider that's his expertise and that's his job. So let him do his job. You can't go around and micromanage everyone.
One of the thing when it comes to depth is you can't hire because you have no authority to hire. You don't give them the authority to be law enforcement. That only comes from the sheriff's authority.
Okay.
Oh, that's, and and that's why there's an RS that says that the sheriff has complete control of the operation of his office.
I use him as a bad example.
Good example, because, because, you know, because it's not our job to micromanage.
No.
Right?
No, because.
And that's what you have to be careful of is that micromanaging.
Yeah, but I think hiring department heads isn't micromanaging.
But I I've had every opportunity to, you know, be on and have have to work, so.
I have to. I I I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I think before the process was that we would work through. The entire process and look at the applicants and go through that and. But I I feel like I was not engaged in that once Andy got here. And and what I think that 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 needs to be rectified, I think we need to be reviewing department heads, not just the. Um, administrator, I think that we need to have input on that as well. I think that we need to be more engaged in the county government than just. Saying yea or nay to the county administrator. And that's, and that's where I think the. The major disagreement is between the two of us is that I think you want to just talk to the administrator. And 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 trust that they will just get it done. And if they don't start, then then I don't disagree with you. Can you can stop that, but I think as time goes on. And one, that person gets more and more powerful, you end up with a bureaucrat, just like you do in Salem or in. Um, the federal government that's more powerful than the elected officials that come and go. And you end up, if you get the wrong person, you'll you'll. Destroy the community and culture of Cook County.
And that's, that I've had every opportunity to be a part of. Of all that process, my door is always open. People can talk to me whenever they want to. Whether they are an apartment head or an elected official. And I still visit, not as much as I used to, but I'm not doing as much work as I was used to doing. That has been taken care of with the administration. But I know, uh, you know, if anybody wants me, they can reach out and touch me, I'm here.
And that's his style of how he holds on. And my style is much more, I want to see your eyes. I want to look you in the face. I want to hear what you have to say. Brian has his style, I have my style, you have your style. Again, that's up to the voters. To kind of come in and do, I I don't, I don't see the county administrator as being threatening because I have never heard Andy tell me no yet. Now, I haven't asked for anything too outrageous. Get ready, but. You know what I'm saying? So I think again, that's Brian's style. The people that know Brian know that. And they, and he addresses it that way. My style's a little bit more different. Your style's different and that's what we bring. Together, because if we're all alike, we never grow. We need to be different because differences make us stronger and better. So that's a good, it's a good thing. And I value both of your opinions and obviously in the last couple of weeks. In the complaint department, I've kind of asked a few questions because I do value your opinions. But again, that's an individual style and I would hope that that would be why if I'm elected. That's why I would be elected is because people like that and people like what Brian bring it. And people like what you bring. So I kind of find that individualistic and maybe. Maybe when Andy came in, there was a perception or maybe he said something that made you think that. But again, I haven't been told no. Maybe I'm just a spoiled child. I don't know, but. And he's facilitated, like I say, things that I had brought to him and been disturbed about.
Well, I can tell you that I've had numerous arguments and I think I work generally well with Andy. But I've had numerous arguments where he's told me, no, that's not appropriate to have that conversation with the department head. No, you can't ask him to do that. And and I don't think.
And I don't know that.
No, and I'm and I'm just trying to explain to you what I've run into. And again, I I don't have beef with Andy. I I think there's a lot of things that you're very good at, Andy. I think that just like Suzie, your your personal interactions with people or, and I've told you that to your face, that they're, you know. I see it sometimes and there's I have real concerns about that, but.
I'm a to the face.
But I, again, I just don't think that, um, what you, I think that. Where you, the way you think, what you're looking for is more of a hands on county court. And I think what Brian's thing is more just, I mean, from from what was pitched to me was. The only person that you interact with is the, I mean, within with any kind of authority, not authority, that's not the right word, but any kind of. Questioning or or major, could you, could you check into this for me? Is you need to go to Andy to have that conversation, to talk to somebody in the planning commission to to look into something for you. I mean, I've heard that from from Andy and and that, I mean, and that concerns me greatly.
And I think, you think that's what I do.
Well, I've heard Andy complain that you don't listen to him and you go behind his back. And so, I mean, I know, because I've heard him say, well, Seth, you get it, but I've seen Brian. Brian doesn't seem to understand how the system works. I've heard him say that on numerous occasions.
I know, I don't have a say in this, but it's a long time elected official in this county and this affects my office as well as every other department in the county. And I just want to say that whether it's Andy or whether it's anyone else, the bottom line is the three of you are the leaders of this town.
Yeah.
The people put you in office to do a job, okay? They expect you to do the job. And if you guys can agree to move forward with this, whatever decision you come up with, make a decision and move forward with it. Or you're not going to get any help as a community.
Yeah.
They have to know and it's not going to be any particulars, special groups that gets this or another group that gets that. You got to work for the whole community, the whole county, okay? And if you don't make a decision and move this forward. And then you're you're ineffective as a commissioner. In the county, in the city, people in the county know that. Now, if talking about department heads, I put every one of my commanders in a position because they have qualities to do what they're there for. That's the same as you have with the department heads here. That's your decision. You know, whether it's you hire a county administrator or whether you have whatever, or whether it's a county judge or whatever. It's your decision who you put in those positions. The trust your department heads to pick the right people for the their office. That's what you got to do. You know, I I trust my staff, my command staff to make decisions on what happens within their division. They bring it to me. If it's a decision that needs to be made for the overall operation, I make the decision, but I use that based on their input. Same thing with you have an administrator. I don't see the administrator being the one that's in charge of the whole county. That's your job. They bring you advice and then maybe they have legal advice that they know that you don't. That's their job.
And that's exactly right. We're not lawyers either.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why I say, that's why I think we need someone who has that education and that background. And I I wasn't for you, Andy, but I am for you now because I do think we need that. And I think that as elected officials, you're elected on the basis of how you perform. And I I totally agree with you. We need to come to a decision. We need to quit bickering. We need to just figure out what we're doing, whether it be right, wrong, or whatever. And you're right, the city, the people in Primal or Cook County have, there there's a lot of questions out there. And there's a lot of faith that has been lost and we need to get that back. And I I'm not sure how we, whether it's a mailer, whether it's a public meeting, whether it's whatever. We need to come up with a decision, the three of us can figure this out and get the faith of the people back and get on track.
I mean, if, I mean, then I would say we should, we need to go out for a vote and let the people decide on what government they want. I mean, that's, I mean, that's my belief. That's what we heard.
But you have to educate people. You're going to have to live with the decision they make. And I don't have a problem with living with the decision they make, but you have to educate people. And I don't feel the three public meetings that were held, I felt they were a waste of two hours of dry time of me coming in. To listen to people say, I've been in Cook County X amount of years and whatever. There was not one really constructive thing said. There might have been a couple people I'm not going to say, but. On a basis of a percentage, there was no education. So therefore, what you're saying is we need, and I kind of agree with you, we need to educate the people. What form do we do? If you're worried about a public meeting, do we send a mailer out? And then maybe have a public.
Sure. Before you do that, though, within educating the public, um, your guys' roles and responsibilities, all three of you. Listening to what you discussed today aren't all necessarily aligned. So before you educate the public on what often they're out there, maybe the three of you need to discuss what. Those are as commissioners supporting the laws for that.
And you're, and you're right. And maybe that's, and maybe if we can't come to alignment. We stand up at a meeting and say each art, each respective things, because again, we're elected officials. And that would be how a person would know and, you know, because maybe we can't come to a lot. I'm not sure. I'm just saying, we need to figure something out. We need to figure it out rapidly. And and that March date I thought was very, and that was something I didn't think about. Thank God Andy said, you know, people are going to file. Don't you think they know what they need to be filing for? And it was an extremely good comment that totally was over my head. I one, I just wasn't thinking that direction. And he's exactly right. And that's again, where differences make you stronger. And you're right, we're not aligned, but maybe that's part of the process is that we all stand up and say what we think. Just like we have today, just like right here at this table.
That's exactly what I got out of those public meetings was nobody understood who does what roles. Right here, you guys don't understand what exactly Andy's role is and what your role is. There is no job description for you.
And maybe that needs to be.
But I think as the four of you need to define who does what roles, then that does need to be rolled out to the departments. And then rolled out to the public. It can be done in a mailer. It could be done then followed up with a public meeting. I I mean, and I kind of think the public meetings, there was a lot of assumptions made by the public because they weren't.
There was no education.
There was no education.
You just drove there and you sat down and like you say, you listened to people.
Right.
Right, and and you guys.
They also wanted to ask a lot of questions to get the information they needed. And at so a couple of those meetings, that wasn't even really allowed. I mean, they asked, but there was not a lot.
You need a strong, I'm going to say MC, which is not probably the right term. You need a strong MC that keeps the drift not going. If it gets political, they need to shut it down and stop that and go back to the basis. We're here today to talk about the budget and we're here to talk about a job description of a commissioner. And a job description of Andy or administrator. That's what you would have to do. And you have to have someone very strong that keeps that diversion and doesn't go off. I have a house over here and you voted. That's what you would have to do, and you have to have someone very strong that keeps that diversion and doesn't go off. I have a house over here and you voted against it. Or whatever your example is, you do have to be that, and I agree with that, very strong.
And maybe even a public meeting is maybe not a great idea.
I don't know if it is, I just know.
Maybe a, a public, whether it be like a survey thing or a community email that. Some way where you could get feedback from them, but it wouldn't be in.
I don't know how you do that though Cheryl, I don't know how you do that. That's why I'm bringing this up. And if I had all the answers, I would be wonderful, but I don't.
Well, I mean, I think at that point you're talking more about the, what was the. Charter committee of looking at what the citizens want and putting together a group of citizens to making that decision, but that's, that's a lot longer process than we're talking about.
We don't have very much time.
I mean, I think. We have time, we just, I don't think there's any reason to move forward quickly and do the wrong thing.
No, I, I don't want to do the wrong thing either, but.
But I think the citizens are looking for your leadership.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's what you guys do. You're in that every day.
And that's.
What do you think works, and that was kind of something that I don't think that some of those meetings, and the last one, we did hear a little bit more on what you guys thought, but. That was kind of the thing is like, well, where do you stand on this? What are your thoughts?
And it's, and it's just like I said, I wasn't for the position. I now have been here and I am for, and I'm not scared to stand up and say what I believe in. And if you don't like me, well, then you don't like me, and it can hurt my feelings. I mean, I'll just go back to the line and it's pretty nice out there. Again, it's really nice out there, but anyway, I'm just saying, we, we need to come to some. Maybe we need to mold this over, all three of us individually. And then come back and put this on our next session and come up with a firm kind of word. Like each, like Seth and, and Brian and I each saying, this is the direction we need to go. There's a lot of flaws in, and like you're saying, there, there's just a lot of flaws in all the different ways, but we need to get together. And we need to be a team, and I, I don't know that we're a team right now.
And our community is, that's right, and you guys all saw that, of the outsiders coming in. We are too, we don't, we don't want that, so I think a lot of people didn't understand exactly what Andy's role was, and that he. You know, isn't our forever person in that position. He's not trying to make us bend, he's not trying, you know. And I think a lot of people didn't understand that. That's why they were so offended that we added administrator and, and that they weren't involved is because of. You know, they just need to know that that is a higher position and it will be posted and. You will, you will put the right person in there for our, for our future.
You guys are all going to have different opinions about everything, but if you're going to be a team, you all have to realize that there's going to be compromise on one side or the other. You know, and I use this philosophy at my office. I tell my commanders, when we're in the office with the door shut, you can tell me and we can discuss anything, you can disagree with me if you want. But when we leave this office, we have to be one voice.
Yes.
That's where you all three need to be. When you're out in the public, you need to be one voice. You're showing the, the split, and people see that. Your department head could see that. You got to be, you got to be a strong leadership in order to have a strong organization. That's all I got to say.
And I, no, and I agree with you, and one of the things of going around to department heads. Is a lot of the departments all feel they haven't seen the commissioners. You're, you're a classic example. What can I do for you? Will you just walk through the building once a week? How hard is that to cross the street? It's not, that's not hard at all. How hard would it be for me to drive up to Rebecca's and say, hey, how are things going, you know? So I do feel that there is some definite need, but again, you are exactly right. We need a team and we need to go out on our, on our front, and maybe the best thing is for us all to just go home today and digest what we've had. And come back and figure out how we get back together. We're not really making any headway, we're kind of saying the same thing back and forth. And we just get together and we figure it out, and I'm not going to say, you know, this is a, I'm going to figure this out in ten minutes, I'm not, I'm going to mull it over. Wake up at two in the morning like I normally do and have an answer, which I wish I would quit doing, but, yeah.
Can you remind us, public meetings were a really small percentage of.
Oh, total, there's twenty-three thousand people. How many was at Meadow Lakes when I was there? Maybe fifty. I agree with you totally, I'm just saying. We need to figure out what we're going to do, and we need to figure out how we're going to satisfy the public. That's just what we need to do, and we need, and you're exactly right, we need to get together. What's said in this room. Needs to stay in this room, and when we walk out of this room together, we walk out with our, with an opinion that we have.
The public needs the confidence in you guys.
Yeah, and we are the elected officials, and if we're lacking in that, we're not elected. I truly believe in democracy, maybe not right at this particular moment nationally, but that is the, the deal.
What would happen with this work for you to do? We have that, the week of the twenty-second, so the twenty-fourth is an open Wednesday. That we have just a dedicated work session to this, we can bring, get to you in advance, a whole series of. Uh, various roles, responsibilities typically that you find with a governing board. And have that discussion.
That might be more factual.
Together with, here's the administrator, you know, job description, together with, here's the. Uh, information that we use to build that job description, you know, because there's again, some. Missing links in that, that are hurting this, you know, organization, you know, communication is an area that. Administrator doesn't have that responsibility for, so. We have a communications officer that really isn't, uh, you know, doing that role to where, you know, it needs to be to be able to communicate all this information out to the public. And a man that represents the three of you, and just to clarify, you guys. Have always been able to go out to department heads. The agreement coming into this position has been, you're not there to give them any direction. You're there to listen, be my eyes and ears, you're not to give direction. That was the agreement that you guys, you know. And that was an agreement that each one of you guys made to me was, we would not be providing direction. That's what an administrator does. We don't want to see the confusion, and that's back to John's point, once you three, I represent three of you. Not one of you, and I know when one of you are, you know, working on something, I'm trying to facilitate where we have the court, the body of whole. Representing the county saying, yeah, these are the important things, but I'm implementing, you know, whatever decision I am, I'm trying to do that. Understanding where I think the three of you are. Do I get that wrong every once in a while? You know, possibly, big picture. I'd say it's very limited, you know, and, you know, it's like clock you're wrong once, you know, if you, you know, dead clock you're wrong or right twice a day. I think it's almost the reverse of that. Very few times have we got it wrong, I think at the administrative level. Because there's a lot of people who are involved in these administrative decisions. I'm typically not making these unilateral. There's, department heads are involved with many of these issues that you'll feed up, and I'm not. Micromanaging literally any of the departments. There's a few that I'm more engaged with. Trying to up our game, particularly in administrative services area, because they impact every single, you know, department in the organization. You know, trying to make sure we're getting the information they need, the employees they need, et cetera, so they can perform their work. You know, facilities that they need, you know, those are in legal services and in, you know, having computer systems at work. That's where my focus has been primarily, because, you know, we've got, you know, strong department heads in those other areas that have lots of experience in those areas.
What do you think about doing the next meeting? We do job descriptions and we go through all this. What do you think? How do you think we move forward?
Well, we spent the last year and a half going through job descriptions and looking at all of us, I said. I don't know if you've been pretty dull with that explanation, but there, we each filled out forms and then we tried to work together to decide. Give and take and be united in front going forward, and it's, you know, I mean, it's like, it's, Andy mentioned the, uh. You know, the media thing, um. Seth absolutely did not want anyone to be in charge of the media, you know, so we said, fine, you'll be in charge of the media. But when you're in charge of the media, and if something that you don't really particularly care gets out, or, or whatever is important to you gets out. May not be what's important to, you know, to do, it doesn't get out, and so. You, you know, but if that doesn't work, it's got to be somebody that you hired to do it and do it for everyone. For the best interest of the county.
No, I, I agree with that.
I mean, and those were, we went through each and every one of those things to try, because we had, we've had media, actually, we've had. Trying to bring us all together so we could be united, but it's just not going to be united. There's just three different people and two have had a different opinion on things than one. And so, I, I know. Team is great, but we're three politicians, and I'm not a politician, but that's the position that we're in. And I have no, no three politicians that could agree on the same thing, we're fighting all the time anyway, so. It's a little bit different than what John says when he goes into the office, because they are his employees at the bottom line. And you can have these conversations and do them, but they're not, you know, I mean, he's still our boss. And that's what you have when you go to department head meetings, we're still the big number one boss. But I want the folks, I want the department heads, I want them to come together, I want them to, I don't want to micromanage them. I want them to be, feel free to be able to say, you know, I don't like Commissioner Barney, or I think we should do this. And we should do this, and let them collectively come up and manage the county, and here we are overseeing the policy. And we know what's going on, but they're running it. That's why I'm hiring.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's arguing with that.
You are.
I don't agree with you. Okay, I'm just, I'm just disagreeing with the application of our. What our point is, or what our opinions are about the long-term. Growth of the county in those decisions. I, I don't think I need to be in there telling John how to hire. Or, or hire sheriff's deputies or how, for Katie, how to hand out vaccines or. Give medical, but then I think we need to make sure that we're, as a group, keeping. Community and culture, and I think that's, that's where I think we disagree, and I think that's what's so frustrating, because I think we're so close. That, um, I, I think that. We could do this with a lesser level admin, of administration. We don't need to go full administrator. And that's where I think that compromises, right? I mean, I think I, I, from quite a while ago, I came a pretty far place from saying. You know, we don't need anything. I think that there's definitely the value, and I, I've said this about Andy over and over. There's lots and lots of very positive things he does, and I see the value of that in the organization. But I also think that there's a value to have full-time elected officials. Taking care of what the community wants and, and having the opportunity for them to weigh in, and then bring that on a more. Involved level than just three, four, few part-time commissioners. And so, again, I think.
Okay.
But I mean, we've said it, and we've said it a thousand times.
Can I read the words in the cabinet court through the course of the meetings last fall? This, this was a handout that was given.
So, right now, we're not taking public, so I appreciate it. You're welcome to talk to us individually, absolutely.
We're just going around the world right now, we're not getting anything accomplished, so we need to, I don't know what we do, but we're not giving anything.
Let me start fine. We spent a, a fair amount of time on the job description for the administrator.
Okay.
We have not gone back to talk about roles, responsibilities of.
Commissioners.
Commissioners, because there's no decisions to whether there's going to be a board of commissioners. Commissions and a judge. Yeah, but we can bring forward, you know, what those roles, responsibilities and so forth are. For the electeds, you know, to speak to, you know, what Cheryl, you know, was talking about, and I think a little bit, you know, John as well. In terms of, you know, what are those roles responsibilities that you all want to have? In terms of how these interactions work within the organization, just to have those clarified and understood and everybody on the same page.
I think they can be clarified, but I think they've been gone over pretty well, because we have taken everything down and. Created how the administrators want to work. Those are all the roles that we have, so those are not a job description. But we can have a condensed one of, of what's left over.
Yeah, there's. Yeah, it's a, it's a bulleted list, and I think my, there might be some stuff that Mike, you know, is looking at from, you know, public meeting that speaks to. The roles, responsibilities of a court policy, setting, you know, policy for the organization, hiring, firing, county administrator. I mean, there's a whole host of, maybe a dozen of those bullets that exist, and we can get those out.
I, I just, I think we're kind of at a stalemate here, and how do we unify?
Well, as far as educating the public to, I think what I'm hearing is the public didn't understand how the administrator. What their roles responsibilities are, what the court, you know, or the board of commissioners responsibilities are. And to what, which Crawford, you know, you know, continued to say is. Someone or another by bringing in an administrator, then that's going to change everything. Uh, I don't see that that's at all the case. If you three are wanting to go, or majority wanting to go a certain direction. Administrator is going to go that direction. If they don't, you're going to find a new administrator, and that's typically how that works, so, you know. At the end of the day, I'm accountable back to the three of you, and I try my best to do. What I know is going to be supported best I can by all three of you. And, you know, I think I've mentioned this to all three of you individually, you know, talked with, you know, folks up at Wasco County that have gone through this. You know, fortunately for them, you know, they had three O support to go to the administrator. And, you know, they said if it had been two one, I'm not sure we would have been able to get it done, you know, because it's just, uh. It's hard to do, and you've heard the frustration here from, you know, some of the, you know, other folks as relates to. That organization needs a decision made, one way or the other, and. Because you can't really keep having this, it sucks up a lot of energy, a lot of.
Waste, it's, it's just wasted time, basically. Time is money, in my opinion, so.
Before we move on, I don't know if you caught what Andy said, is he said hiring and firing the minister.
Yes, we have that ability.
But then that would mean that we wouldn't have the input on hiring the department heads, or, I mean, I don't think we should just. I think I covered that, I'm sorry. I know, but I'm just saying, you know, again, I think we need as elected officials to be more involved in the system. And I think that's where I think, that's where the biggest disagreement is, but we're beating it to death, so I just.
You're just going round and round the mulberry bush.
If those aren't documented, and people don't understand, he said he's not involved with hiring, firing of department heads. Well, that's not true. Every single decision made on a, a department head. I come to you in advance to talk about the position itself. What are you looking for? Do you want to be involved? Do you want to be on an interview committee? Do you want to be involved interviewing applications? And based on that input, we put together the whole recruiting process, and then ultimately, the end of the day, at a minimum. You choose not to be involved, all three of you, which has been the case for most of the positions. Few, there, there has been, you know, that participation road being one of them, was the. Court, the board ratified every single appointment, and we bring forward that process, what we've done, who was involved and so forth. So you are involved in that.
Yeah, last week we did committee members. We had the applications. I, I had read OSU, I'd already read, because I was on OSU at the time. And so I didn't really read them, and, but, I mean, we did committee member. Again, I think that comes from the style of. Your elected official, and I, I, I understand Brian's saying, I'm not micromanaging. I understand I'm a mother who wants to make sure, you know, I understand, that's neat, you know, so I understand all. I, I'm just saying, we're not going anywhere, and we need to figure out.
Sure.
Where we're going, and so I don't know, maybe we just table it right now. And bring it back up and think about it, and think about, again, compromise, being a team, how we're going to work this. I don't know, but we need to do something.
I think.
I'm sorry, I have other issues. I'm going to take you.
All right, John, I'm going to dismiss you. Since I used you as an example and.
What I might suggest is, I can meet with the department heads, we're having this meeting tomorrow, we can extend our meeting to talk about this, to put forth. A framework for you to talk about, so you have something as a proposal on how to move to a decision.
And that was, what would we be, what do you think of that? Okay, I, I, I will go with that, and again, there's a facilitation that he's making for us that. Ratifies his position, I guess. I, I don't know that that's ratifies the right word, but what I'm saying, but yeah. Okay, let's just do that, and then, yeah, and then again, I think we need to consider. the rotation of going to department head meetings. And I know Seth is going tomorrow and I won't be going. And if you want to go to the restaurant, that's fine. And then I'll pick up and we can do that. But I do think that's a really important part of what we need to do.
Thanks for that.
Perfect, perfect. So next time it's you and then it's Brian and then I'll come in the next time. Perfect.
I mean, the only thing I would say is I think it's important to hear what the department is want to do, but I think we also need to involve the public at some point during the process, but that, that would be my only caveat to what we just.
And yeah, like I say, I don't know how to go, but I know we need to go. We need to go down the trail.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. We got, we got the, we got the tough part done. Okay. Are we going into executive session?
Uh, not quite yet. I've got several items. Uh, let's see, Will.
Poor Will, he's been.
Come on.
Sorry, Will, we've been so.
Are we to the administrator part right now? So, um, gun range, wanted to just have Will and John give you a quick update on conversation that we had with Jackie and with Kelly.
About the Palina trap, or not Palina, but the trap, the trap thing through the high school?
That's the logo.
That's the logo.
That's the logo brand.
Yeah.
That the information that I gave you at the meeting.
Yeah. Yes.
But it's a high school.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, um, I was, I was geared up to talk about something else, so.
You gotta switch.
Yeah, I got switched here real quick. So we had a meeting, um, John, Jackie and Kelly from the airport, uh, to chat about the proposal for potential trap somewhere on county property. The, the proposal that was before us at the time was the landfill. Somewhere on the landfill, uh, for a number of reasons, um, the consensus amongst the group is that that was not a great location for it. I think there's some land use hurdles to start with, but there's, um, you know, the relative closeness to the airport. Um, and probably most importantly, uh, Jackie reached out to the EQDQ was kind of like, that's a hard no. Um, so that, that's not an option. We explore some other county-owned property. Including the location where the, um, I forget the name of the.
Law rifle.
The private.
Mountain.
Mountain. Um, law rifle club. Uh, seems on its face, looks like a great location, close to town, um, kind of an existing use there. There's still some land use hurdles because it's EFU. But because of the existing use, maybe a path for the, the underlying issue with that one is there's just access is going to be a significant issue. Uh, and since access to that site already is an issue, then also need to not have the high school kids right out there use the site. Uh, I don't see that conversation going well to private property owners that, um, we need to cross probably, um, for it to get there. Uh, so the, the long and the short of kind of where we landed was the, the club that's looking at this right now kind of probably needs to start looking at private property or solution. Um, I'm happy to discuss with the group, some of the land use hurdles that they may encounter as they look at most likely EFU land for this proposal. I think there's an option for them to explore, working with, uh, the Cook County Parks and Rec District to have the park and rec district incorporate some sort of trap club into their master plan. That kind of opens some doors for that type of use on EFU land. But just looking at the county property, publicly owned property around city of Primeville. Um, not a, not a lot of great, great solutions. Uh, but I'm happy to, if you guys continue to hear from them, they want to talk about land use paths, code paths to get to a point where they can get an approval for, um, the trap club. Happy to have that conversation, but I mean, how we approach them to serve their private property.
Okay, can you do this little white paper?
Sure.
Drift your paragraphs from your main collective. There'll be attachments.
I don't need that. Sean, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we'll cover it.
It just spoiled down. Having a decision. Thank you very much for looking into that.
All right. Second item is, uh, put each your place, uh, an email uh, received from Jackie Davis. She's, uh, available on the call as well to answer any questions you might have. Uh, they've got a piece of equipment that, uh, needs to be rebuilt. It's the bottom last page, you'll see the total price is about forty eight, six hundred, uh, price the to do this rebuild on this, uh, they had a piece of equipment, uh, replacement equipment in the uh, five-year plan, uh, fiscal year twenty seven or so. That equipment costs today around six hundred and eighty K. Uh, and it's all has a V time right now about nine to twelve months. This is going to take about four weeks, as I recall, to, uh, you know, get this, you know, repair fixed. And if you're agreeable, just need a motion to, you know, authorize this repair to be, you know, completed and they'll Peterson will get, uh, get on it.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
And have a motion. I'll make motion to approve the, the, uh, the quote provided by Peterson.
Yeah.
Cat and the man of forty eight thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars eighty-four cents.
And I second that.
Any discussion? Yeah. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Okay, solid waste management plan update, uh, you know, Jackie gets available if you have any questions. I'm going to talk with a few of you. I think all three of you actually about this. They've got a kickoff meeting Tuesday, uh, January thirtieth, eight thirty to ten thirty. Seth has indicated he'd like to attend that kickoff. It's a time when you know, talk about values, et cetera, in terms of, you know, this whole scope of work that's being done by them. And then ten thirty to three, there's a tour and a lunch of the facilities and everything about that. I don't know if, uh, Ryan or Suzy, if you wanted to go, I was going to plan on being there for the whole day, just I have a, you know, pretty good, you know, understanding of all the issues that they're, they're dealing with and you have that visual, but if, if you want to break that up, we can break it up or just.
This is the city of Primeville is doing this?
This is us, actually. This is the county land.
County landfill.
At the landfill.
Yes.
What date is it again?
Uh, it's the thirtieth, which is a Tuesday.
Of January?
Yes.
Okay.
So can we not just advertise that and then we can all participate in that?
I think when it's a field trip, it's not, aren't those.
Yeah, we can advertise. I mean, if all three of you wanted to be there for any or all of it, we could certainly advertise that, you know, that's going to happen and what the purpose of that is and.
So.
If you care to meet.
No, no, I would. No. So next week, next Thursday, I have a meeting with the city of Primeville. And they want to know my goals or whatever. And one of the things after talking to Jackie yesterday, I was going to bring up is that we really wanted to get together and make this solid waste thing. So that was kind of a thing that I was going to talk about to them. Anyway, so yes, definitely. If I'm going to bring that up, then I should come on the thirtieth. So I will, yes. I'll, I'll put that in and it's all day, huh?
Yeah, eight thirty to, yeah, three o'clock.
Hopefully the roads are better. Okay, perfect.
Okay. And then Seth, you wanted to be there for the morning early session?
And I'd like to be there for the tour also.
The tourist, well, okay.
Cause I know they've added a bunch of stuff like that.
Right. Okay.
Just that guy said, that is it.
Yeah, we'll just advertise.
And anyone getting, yeah.
That can be happened.
Yeah, so, um, let me put my head together with you afterwards. We might not need to advertise it if it is only a field trip and no decision will be made. So if we do, then we'll come up with magic words and if we don't, so much is better.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you. And I'll make sure to follow up with Jackie, you know, on that as well. Um, I G A between the, uh, the state and the county as relates to the Justice Senate and the ARPA dollars. Can we have John touch on that?
Uh, remember we discussed this, uh, a week ago, the, uh, out of the agreements we were have with the state, this is, that was the one for the planning and design, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, uh, after we spoke, I got an email from the state that they, remember this was expiring as well. And so they sent us a draft on Friday of an extension that doesn't change any of the substance. It just extends the, um, termination date to, I believe, December first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and so I think it's, uh, recommended to any scientists. It doesn't, like I said, there's no substantive change to the agreement we had before. It just keeps it going. So we aren't in breach for not signing that the other agreements.
Yeah, well, you know how I feel about it. I think we're going to have to sign it, but I don't feel like that. We should have signed it. It should just pay the thing because that wasn't in part of the original contract.
Yep. But despite.
Uh, yeah, but I would just, so communicate that when we do.
Okay.
Because I think that they need to continue to hear that because this is a relevant piece of law.
Yeah, I agree. Um, do we want to sign that today? Do we want to put that on the agenda for, um, the next county court meeting?
However, you need to start.
I, you know, to your point, you know, Brian here, I'm thinking we can put it on the agenda for next week. But in the meantime, talk a little bit more to them about just give us the authority to apply this against the stuff that's already been bought that's consistent with what the dollars were for and stop dragging this thing out. And these are upper dollars, they're not state dollars. It's a pass through. It's not part of the original deal.
Well, and it was not even ARPA dollars at the beginning. It was very general account dollars. And then we, it was a discovery to hire architects to to work out the program to see if the justice center could build architect fees and things of that nature. And it didn't have to go through in order to pay for it. It was just discovery dollars.
Approved by the legislature.
Yes.
So I don't know why they're even asking for this. It's ridiculous.
It should just be paid.
Back when the, the original, I mean, if you remember, they sent us, um, the last minute, I'd be signed to put it into the fiscal year. They said that they, they just, they needed some master funding agreement in order to give us the dollars. So that was their explanation. There wasn't any other reason to time to go.
I know that that's what they're saying, but what I'm telling you is a year, a year and a half before that, the legislature approved that money. And so I really don't care with it. I mean, do we have to? Can we just spend the money and tell them, pound Sam?
It's a matter of them giving us the money. We've.
Have they not given us the money years ago?
Yeah, they. We have the money. It's, it's, it's in a bank account sitting, uh, alone.
We have it.
Yeah, but we, we do have a contract sign that said that if we don't do X and Y by, uh, you know, Z date, then, then we're in breach and need to return the money. And that's what's currently standing. So this at least keeps that going where we'll be not in breach the contract, hold on to the money and maybe can continue discussions then. But what happens with it?
Yeah. And the other part would be go ahead and have a motion now. Go ahead and we can get the thing executed and then we can go through the process of having them just release the ball.
I think with that, that's, yeah, I'm friendly to.
I, I will move for that. I think we should. I think we should just move forward. And I don't know, I understand there's a thing, but if we're going to be in breach, like you said, let's just move forward and then let's go back after. You know, Seth.
Seth.
Okay, good.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Okay, the last thing I've got, uh, here is, we had talked back in late, uh, it's at your, your place, it's the bottom. I think it's the lateral employee vacation rate is how this thing is, uh, but this was, we talked about this back at the end of October, we had this together with the employee handbook. The employee handbook made the, the agenda packet that was approved under the consent agenda on November first. This particular document was not. So we're at a point now where we're ready to implement this and uh, you'll have Kathy Puckett begin to go ahead and, uh, you know, record these adjustments. Um, about seventy percent of your workforce is impacted by this, the way we've talked about it, which again is to make it effective, uh, January first of twenty twenty-four, with a couple of exceptions, Nick, uh, being one of them, because we had committed to this when we hired him back in June. So we've got all the information. We just go back looking. You're just being ultra careful here is that this document again was not in your packet. So it's in the consent agenda to be approved, but if anyone were to go back and look, they'd go, where is this? And so I just, we can either have you approve it through this, at this meeting, or if you want, we can make it part of the consent agenda, uh, next, uh, next Wednesday.
I'm, I'm, because we're going to retroactively give it to anybody. Here's the, the other employees that they don't, they'll receive the benefit either way, right?
Right. They'll receive, all the players will receive this back, you know, that qualify back to January first, uh, the other place that we made hiring decisions, and, and again, Nick was the one that's still here that this was committed to at that time. So we'd honor that. And like I said, I'm finding either putting it on the, during the next week, or if you would want to make a motion to approve it.
So moved because it's just cleaning up. It's, it's fine with me.
Yeah. Second, you have a second. You want to make a formal one, so.
Yeah, sure.
He knows what to write down here.
Right. Yeah, a motion to, uh, approve the lateral employee vacation approval rate policy as presented.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? All right.
All right. That's all I had under the admin. Thank you.
All right, we'll go into executive session.
I do too. So I was going to say, can we have one little break? I'll get a cup of coffee. You go first, Seth.
The county court will now convene into an executive session. One, two, six, zero, one, two, E and one, nine, two, six.